Good afternoon councillors, we've got a quorum so we'll start the meeting on finance and strategy. And I'll call for an apologies, we have a couple of apologies from councillor Thompson, Weirall, Butcher and Bizet, move councillor Collins, second councillor Stevenson, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against Kerry. Confirmation of the agenda, any items of urgency? Not on move from the chair, the agenda is circulated by the second mayor, sorry deputy mayor. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against Kerry. Declaration of interest, that's for noting, you don't need to do anything with that. So we move on now to the main item on the agenda, or one of the main items. Financial results for 12 months. And I welcome to the table Carolyn Lynn-Marie. Would you like to add anything to the report or any explanations before we ask the questions?
Well I'd just like to say this is the first time we've presented the report in this new format and so we hope that you found it informative. We've tried to put more of a story in words rather than people getting lost in the numbers. The story's pretty much the same as it has been in the past but I think it makes it easier to understand. So Carolyn's prepared the report this month so I'll hand it over to her for an overview and for questions.
From the chair, I'd give you a name. Very good. I think it's very well presented, thank you.
Through the chair, at the top of page 4.2, there's a table there that just gives you an overall summary of the net surplus result and the variance of 5.3 million is explained mostly by the favourable result in the Waipori Fund. With a small amount of carry forward budgets and some cash losses on asset sales that used up the balance of that, so overall the result is largely on budget.
Thank you. Questions councillors? Councillor Wilson?
It's a presentant's statement really, but the solid waste, 185,000 unfavourable, which in some ways is favourable having done the waste minimisation policy yesterday and it's about council partners talking to each other and in some ways that should be seen as a success. It's an unfavourable financial result but a success for the council policy. And I'm probably pushing you far too far to go to that extent but I think it would be nice if these spoke for other policies at some stage in the future.
Further questions? Councillor Hudson?
What's the change in the accounting treatment for builder consent money?
So previously when somebody came in and paid for their building consent, the entire amount would be receipted to our income statement, it would all be revenue, at the time that we took the money and at that time we hadn't done any of the work. So now what happens is as we do the work, parts of that building consent are credited to revenue so over the course of the time that the work's carrying on, we're recognising the revenue.
Thank you. Councillor Vanders?
Further to my question that I emailed this morning regarding the debt graphs. We've got a net debt graph here which shows the maximum, including the stadium, of 380 million debt. But the new graph is a gross debt graph and shows that it's 416 million total. Can you explain the reason for the increase?
Councillor Vanders, I'm struggling to see what page that is on the agenda.
Well, it's implied in the agenda but not spelt out and that's another thing that I think should be spelt out. I'm talking about what the actual total debt is now for the DCC, I'm not talking DCHL.
For councillors' benefit, can you refer to the page on the agenda?
It was a question that I put through to start this morning in an email. I haven't been able to tease out where it is in the chart here. But the question relates to total debt.
So therefore...
DCC.
It would be on...
Attachment 7.
Attachment 7, would it be?
If you added a whole lot of things together, on attachment 1 you might get there but...
I think it's 413. Or your 412 is a more summarised version of it.
Through the chair, an email has been sent in response to councillor's query. As I understand it, the query was relating to a chart in our annual plan to do with the 10-year profile of debt. Around, in prior years our annual plan had included a net debt chart, which is debt less cash basically. And now we report a gross debt because it lines up with our financial strategy which has a gross debt target. So irrespective of how much cash we've got in the bank. But yes, those numbers are not incorporated into this report.
Right, but why aren't they incorporated into a financial report? If they are current and it's the same just to do with this year and if there's been a difference in the way the debt has been presented in the past as net debt as opposed to gross debt now, there seems to be an increase from 380 million through to 416. Is that because of the negative cash on hand issue or has something else changed?
I'll just need to go back to the plans and check, are you talking about one particular year?
I'm talking about now.
About now?
2003.
I'll need to come back to you.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Any further questions?
Just one more thing is just to remember that this paper does not contain the debt or the financial papers for the companies. This is just Dunedin City Council. So whereas the graph you're referring to is Dunedin City Council and then it's got the dotted line that the company's on top, so just...
Yes, I made it clear in my email that I had added the stadium debt since it was completely our debt but I hadn't got into discussing the DCHL debt.
Yes, so we have a policy, this is the council papers, the council financial position, the council debt only in this paper. The other details of finances will come to you through the annual reporting process.
Okay, but given that the debt to the stadium is simply on top and hasn't changed, why do we have such a large difference?
Yes, I understand that, it's what Carolyn said, she'll come back to you for an explanation of the cash position.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Someone like to move for the recommendation? Move councillor Hudson, second councillor Sames, it's open for discussion. Councillor Vanders?
Unusually, there's an unfavourable budget here that I'm really quite pleased about and that's on 4.3, where it talks about a change in focus from enforcement to education for non-motor offences, which means that the $2 million odd dollars we charge in fines has been reduced a bit and I'm very pleased to see that there's a change in enforcement there. And though it's not positively affected the bottom line but it's a change, it's welcome nonetheless, thank you.
But it's positively affected your cash flow, isn't it, Councillor Vanders?
Actually, now that you mention it, personally it probably has.
All right, any further discussion? If not, a proclamation, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against Kerry. Move on now to the Waipori Fund report and I welcome Mr Knight and Mr Liddell to the table. Thank you. I think it's really quite pleasing when you have a report like this laying on your table, that is good news. And we've had good news for most of this year coming out of the Waipori Fund so I'll hand it over to you to elaborate and explain how we've got there.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Well certainly it's very pleasing for the board of Dunedin City Treasury to have been involved with the Waipori Fund this year. It is worthwhile noting though that it's just one of the functions of Dunedin City Treasury and it's certainly secondary to raising a good 600 million of good rates through thick and thin. And so that's the primary role of Dunedin City Treasury. But the Waipori Fund, it has had a very good year, profit 7.5 million, the budget was 4.8 and last year we were less than a million. It could have been even better except during, we had lost 1.1 million to extract that pot would have been an exceptionally good result. The aim of the Waipori Fund is, in the management office, to run a relatively conservative fund and we've got roughly 40% of the assets of the fund invested in tax interest securities and that's a pretty high proportion so it's relatively conservative. But of course Dunedin City Council needs cash so we're trying to make sure that that's available. We don't aim to be traders, we like to have a distance that we're proud to hold and not look to be in and out of things on a short-term basis. The Waipori Fund is now 15 years old and in all that time we only had one yield which was negative and that was the 2009 which was the result of the global financial crisis. We've had some other years that have been pretty poor but only one negative. And a lot of financial advisers would say a fund of this nature would expect a negative of 5 or 6 years. The fund has grown from initial 56 million to now 76 million and that is extremely pleasing to us that we've managed more or less to keep up with inflation over those 15 years. We're only a fraction behind that. It's worth noting to councillors that we've made a decision recently to change our financial advisers. We have had all the advisors from the start of the fund and we've recently just changed to crates. And we went to a proposal from the both firms and we've stuck with Dunedin base firms but made the change to crates. Many factors can affect the results and exchange rate is one of the probably most interesting to councillors. If it's strong, if the New Zealand currency is strong, then we can buy overseas shares more cheaply. We've got quite a lot of overseas shares to have a good balance for profit. But if the currency strengthens then when we mark the market, it means we lose on the exchange movement. So we can have some ups and downs and really over the last few years the currency's been quite strong and that's been negative on the substantial holdings we've got in international securities. It's interesting that US securities don't pay a lot of dividends so you're very much involved with movements in market price. The UK-based securities are much more dividend payers and perhaps the exchange movement's not quite so serious there. The outlook, which is always important to look at, we obviously can give no guarantees of future profitability but we think that the financial stability in the world is a little bit, and has been over the last few years. The United States in particular, still a bit scary in Europe and we're reasonably optimistic that going forward things will be relatively stable. The first two months of this year have been good months for the fund and the result is approximately 1.4 million for those two months, so that's positive. It's worth noting though that we have made distributions, two distributions of 1 million each, which really relate to last year. So while we were crowing in our results that 8,300 deficit at the start of the year had been reduced to 2.3, that's the distributions ahead of what would have been allowed if we'd been completely keeping out inflation. Some of that was because the distributions in the last financial year were relatively modest and we picked up a little bit of that in this period. But at this stage we think that the outlook is relatively secure but we can obviously have no guarantees but we'd expect to either go to pay what is budgeted for this coming year. Would you have to make any questions?
Questions? Councillor Vanders?
Thank you very much for that very positive result. When you said that you've managed to more or less keep up with inflation, are you referring to the 4.3 million on page 5.1 that is still a real fall in the value of the fund? Okay, so the fall in real value had been quite...
The figure you brought in there's not quite the right figure.
I'm reading 4.3 million off the page 5.1, the question was was that what you were referring to?
Yes, okay. This particular 2 million that's been distributed this year. So as at the end of last year, the last financial year, the figure was 2,384.
Right, and we've had distributions of 2 on that.
Yes, but we also made 1.4.
So what you're saying is that when you've managed more or less keep up with inflation, that's what you're referring to in the second line of the summary?
Yes.
Yeah.
We started the year 8,333,000 per fine where we should be, we've been strictly keeping up with inflation and we ended the year with 2.38 million per fine.
Right, so in fact we've got a pretty stellar result, even a turnaround you might say compared to what we had a few years ago.
True.
Would that then, given that there have been discussions off and on about selling down the Waipori Fund to pay debt or whatever, would that suggest that with the fund going so well now, would now be a good time to actually look at selling the fund? Or do you think we should keep taking gains while they are coming in so well?
Well, I was looking at the fund that was established because of the forced sale of the Waipori Power generation, which was a diversification for council. It's a diversified portfolio we've got, it's produced earnings pretty satisfactorily over 15 years. I'd be holding on to it. I'm not a seller but I mean it's easy to pay a bit of debt and then all you do is turn around and buy something else and you've got debt to go.
Point is well taken, thank you.
Questions? Councillor Wilson?
I just wanted to say that the summary actually isn't City Treasury's statement, it's Carolyn Lynn-Souze and I just want to clarify that when Lee was asking questions then, that first page is not the expected document. It isn't there to ask any questions on it.
Councillor Stevenson?
Well, thank you. You were saying before that when the New Zealand currency is high, it's not a good time to buy overseas shares?
Not to buy.
Sorry?
When the currency is strong, that's a good time to buy, because you buy lots of European or American shares that we've got.
But it's not a good time to buy now?
Well, we're unheeded, so it's a reasonable time to buy because the currency is relatively strong. All I just note is that because their currency's continued to strengthen over the last few years, we've had currency, we've marked the mark, we've had some negative aspects of that. So the shares that we're holding, which we bought when our currency was not quite as strong as it is now, we've lost a little bit of currency.
Yeah, okay. I just sort of wondered if there would be opportunities as things change that we actually sell some and then look at more investing locally, back into New Zealand, back into Dunedin? I know you've got an investment profile, you try to keep the mix, you know, mixed. But you know, if there are opportunities to look at the shares, your overseas shares, that you may be a little bit more nervous about and then looking at investing a little bit more locally instead?
Well, New Zealand is a tiny economy.
I know.
Tiny economy. And when you look through the list of shares, we've got quite big holdings in New Zealand companies. We don't like to have much more than about a million in a New Zealand company. And we're getting, half of them is quite a nice amount to have. We're getting there for companies that we think are reasonable. We didn't invest in Zero, it's a great pity. There's lots of secondary shares that we wouldn't want to invest in, they're just too risky for the Waipori Fund. It is a conservative fund. So I think we'd better try and keep the balance rather than sell international and local money to New Zealand companies.
No, I don't want to stop the balance. But I did want something towards local as well. So like I said, you've got 12.5% of the New Zealand equity, which is good. How much of that is in Dunedin? Because it doesn't split it that way.
I'd say probably Zero is invested in Dunedin based companies.
Just opposed to Zero the company? Yeah, exactly. Do you think that there's any chance that one day we would have a little bit of that New Zealand portfolio actually in Dunedin?
Well, when you say Dunedin, do you mean companies with head offices in Dunedin?
Companies, no, companies, well, yes, there may be companies like...
Scotty Technology as well, it comes to mind, we don't own Scotty Technology. After Cap, I can't think of another listed New Zealand company with head offices in Dunedin. There's lots of Dunedin businesses but not seemingly listed. So not particularly listed.
Silver Fins is a...
Not listed.
Are they? Okay, anyway, it's just something I can put to you that, you know, some thought can be put into that, just to give a balance.
But we know that there's not a lot of listed companies with head offices in Dunedin either. Quite often it's a former partner of a group where head offices went north.
Okay, well then I'll ask one more question then. With eight points, the amount that you've got invested in property has declined and some of that is invested in New Zealand and some in Australian equities for property. And I was wondering, are any property in Atago or Dunedin of that?
We're totally invested in property equity, so that's companies that are owners of properties.
Right.
There's no...
Individual properties?
No listed company in Dunedin. And probably most of the companies in which we're invested don't hold any properties in Dunedin. Argosy, Tenzin, Goodman, Heewee, increasing property, the Vital Healthcare, all the New Zealand ones. And I doubt whether they hold any property in Dunedin.
Okay.
And the problem with that is just they look for properties where they can have strong rental growth and that tends to be awkward relative to the price group.
Right, okay, and because we tend to go for listed, well, we do go for listed companies and because Dunedin doesn't apparently have very many, it's not considered, okay?
Councillor Wilson?
Just on the fixed interest, are those New Zealand deposits or international? So that money there could be through any of the banks, how many banks can you go through?
Well, it's not generally through banks, it's through institutions.
Institutions?
Yes.
But that money could be invested in Dunedin or elsewhere in New Zealand for businesses and or property?
Well, they're usually rated all along, especially on rating.
Rating.
There are normalisations like Contact Energy, B&amp;Z, ASP, Power Company, who have, even though their head offices are outside Dunedin, they still have activities there.
Yeah, that's... I mean, I think it's really hard to invest but that is the area that I would have thought that was potential investment. Not directly, yes of course, but indirectly, it doesn't preclude some of those benefits.
New Zealand Equity also, you know, there's Coors, Contact, Fish and Park, they all got, and they might not have their head office here but they've all got activities here.
Yes.
Ron and Healthcare.
Yeah, that's, yeah, thank you.
Any further questions? Well, no, I meant councillor McTab, sorry.
So my question is for Dr Bedros and it's just about council during annual planning time asked for a report on ethical, possible ethical investment options for this fund. I just wondered if you had an update on where that's at?
That report is, just arrived, an email this morning actually, saying that it's draft so I wanted to check that they're on the right track. I would expect that report to be finalised by September, in the next two or three weeks so it'll be presented to the new council.
Any further questions? Well, I'll move that the report be noted, just seeing that councillor Wilson discussing?
Just briefly, maybe I should have spoken to the last one as well but I just think when we have good news, it's worth celebrating and this is good news and it's worth celebrating and getting back within kooi of the real value of the fund, I think, is really neat and something that we've been aiming at for the last, well, two and a half years really. So I think that's really, that's an achievement. As is the last report where I think, you know, if it hadn't been for a couple of weather events, we would have come in under budget and I think that's testament to the excellent work of staff. So, sorry, I probably should have highlighted that in the last report.
Just before I put the motion, from the chair, I'd like to pass on the thanks of council for the sterling work, the Ross that you've done in Dunedin City Treasury and in the Waipori Fund. Your skill has really helped this council keep its borrowings at the right level. We've, right through the period that I've been involved in council, we've always been getting rates well above, or better rates than the rest of the market for the city. What you've hedged well for the city and I think it's a lot of credit to the city's financial position at the moment is due to the sterling work that you and Mr Knight do in Dunedin City Treasury and also in managing the Waipori Fund, which is very clearly on our papers today. So on behalf of council, I thank you very much for your input and your involvement. I'll put the motion, all those in favour?
Aye.
Sir Kerry? Move on now to I do six, which is the Walton Park investment revenue. Welcome to the table Lisa and Mac. I just want to discuss this paper on the point of process so that we don't get into a situation whereby there is some discussion that leads us down the wrong track. This is a Part B item, so therefore any decision that's made here has to be referred to council. So it's a recommendation to council. Given that within the paper, there are recommendations from the Saddle Hill Community Board and the community boards do not have the power to make recommendations to council. So therefore they don't have the power to actually recommend to council that it must follow out a particular trend. So all it is is advice to council, it's not a recommendation. So when you look at the recommendation that came from the Saddle Hill Community Board, you might say it's at odds with the staff recommendations. Well, staff recommendations are purely on the basis of the financial model that's been put in front of them. Any surplus funds that come has to be applied to debt and that's a policy that this council has implemented. So that is why there is that slighter odds to the recommendations of staff to the community board. But council in the end makes the policy and can change the policy. So if there is a wish around this table, recommendation three can be changed by the majority of this committee as a recommendation to council if there is the wish of the committee. So we'll make it quite clear, thank you. Councillor Hudson?
Given the circumstances, which are slightly different probably to most of the other things that we deal with because of the community involvement in the planting of this project 30 years ago, I would like to move that the $10,000 from the sale price to be utilised for the completion of the main road Fairfield verification project. And $10,000 be committed to a project for the upgrading of Walton Park Reserve identified from the Fairfield School submissions to be approved by the board and Parkinson Reserve staff and that the balance of the money be directed to boards repaying council debt in line with the liability management policy subject confirmation of the emissions trading scheme liabilities. So I would move all of the recommendations with that amendment to recommendation three.
And that would have to be a recommendation to council?
To council.
This is a part B order. Are we a second for that motion?
Can I ask a question first? The reason I want to ask a question is, I'm not sure that I want to second or not it because I just want to know, are there any other examples of this sort of situation likely to happen with, for example, trees at Waikato or in Port Chalmers area or anywhere else that you are aware of? Because it's the precedent effect, I have a huge amount of sympathy for the suggestion but I want to understand the precedent effect that it may have because I'd like to think we consistently treat these things consistently.
If I may, through the chair, we are going through a process at the moment of dealing with harvesting a crop at Waikato. That land is land that's owned by the Crown and there is a lease in place between the Dunedin City Council and the Crown around how the revenue is used and that lease has a clause in there around that the revenue be used for the wider domain. So the land status and ownership is different and the Walton Park land is purely... So the land status and ownership is different and the Walton Park land is purely council owned and council have the ultimate ability to make a decision around how the funding is utilized. Is that, help?
Councillor Collins is going to second the motion, so I'll allow questions first and then we'll get into debate. So questions, councillor Stevenson?
Okay, thank you. Can I ask a similar question for urban areas? Because I think there needs to be, like, this area has a community board, but there's also trees that are milled in urban areas as well and they haven't traditionally got some value back to the community that I've been aware of. So I suppose ones that are, the milling of trees around Ross Creek and Bethunes Gully and, sorry, and Alice Park.
Yes, if I may through the chair, we have done a number of harvesting projects over the last couple of years. This project and the timing of it has achieved a far higher revenue expectation than what we've been able to receive in the parks. And most of the other projects have only just been able to allow us to do the site rehabilitation. And any further remaining funding that had been around allowed to cover up any other operational costs, but it was very minor.
Because Bethunes and Ross Creek, there weren't any return from those two, because I thought they were different ways there.
If I can comment on the Bethunes Gully, the Ross Creek is a different situation. It's not actually, it's actually water and waste land and it's built in a different way, but the Fraser's Gully certainly is.
Yep.
In both those cases, the projected returns on milling were barely able, barely able, if at all, to cover the cost of rehabilitation on the site. So a situation where a surplus is available and certainly a situation where there's a pre-existing arrangement in place for the planting of the trees which are used at Walton Park, in other words, they were planted before the city amalgamation. That they are different in that respect. And in the urban area, in the non-community board areas, the felling has been initiated as part of the planning for the reserve of staff to provide revenue specifically to try and meet a rehabilitation budget. And that hasn't been exceeded with surplus, unfortunately.
Councillor Lewis?
The question that I have was similar to councillor Wilson's, but I'm not sure that you quite answered where I was. So councillor Wilson gave the example of Waikuaite and you responded directly about Waikuaite. But I think the broader question is, are there any other plantations anywhere in Dunedin City that could be presented, the same arguments could be presented to council for community retention of harvesting revenue?
Or Port Chalmers?
Or Putu Kanui, for example. I don't know whether we own those pines out there or not, but...
To my knowledge, there are. There are trees that have been planted for shelter, but not for specific forest harvesting. In this case, the trees were planted as an economic investment, quite deliberately. In other areas, pines, and in fact, that's questionable with our Fraser's Gully too. They were planted for shelter, for stability reasons, and the trees have reached a stage of maturity. So it is a different scenario. To my knowledge, there's not a similar scenario to this one. And we're basically dealing with grandfathering, guaranteeing, I apologize, historic arrangements that were put in place.
And in terms of the budget that you guys are planning on retaining to do the rehabilitation of the site anyway, does that include a budget for the walkway that is on the map?
If I may, yes, it does. It won't be a completely forked walkway. It'll be tracks that are cut and left quite natural, but it does allow for that.
And in terms of the proposed, the two lots of revenue that the community board have recommended that $10,000 be applied to, one of them refers to a beautification project and the other is things more directly related to the reserve itself. Can you give us any information about the beautification project?
Through the chair, the beautification project was something that came up three or four years ago. It was a staged project and stage one was able to be implemented fully, but stage two was, I guess, put on hold due to the financial constraints that were put on council a couple of years ago. So the development plan was always completed to allow for two stages, but stage two just hasn't fully been, I guess, realised.
Is it adjacent to the Walton Park or is it quite a separate thing?
It's quite separate. It's on the main road and it's quite close to the Fairfield School. So there's a road crossing and some plantings and a couple of additional plots that have been, I guess, bordered. So there's timber edging within the footpath. And that's just been, there's a little bit of gravel being put over the clay in there. That was the intention for stage two. And so it's neither footpath nor grass nor plantings. So it's a little bit untidy and the community board will be out looking to try and, I guess, complete that project.
And what is the budget in this, in the original draft staging plan as it was proposed for that second stage? Like, would the $10,000 be in the right ballpark or is it more than or less than?
Through the chair, the $10,000 has been based on current calculations that have been provided to the board over the last six months to complete the works.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Staines.
I just want to ask the question that sort of builds, you know, we're focusing here around the revenues received from a community-owned asset, the forest. But there are many community-owned assets that sit around our city for which the community has fundraised or has volunteered to create. My concern is that if we take this report and say we will return revenues from this asset to the community, do we then set a precedent for situations where, for instance, we might sell a community facility that was imported into by the community, community fundraising was put into it? Does that then leave us in a situation where we could be approached by that community to say, we want the revenue from that site? When we paid for it, it cost seven and a half thousand pounds, now it's worth $200,000 and we want the $200,000 spent in our community and this is a precedent for why that should happen? And maybe that's not a question that you could answer, but it's, but it's an important one for me. Are we, are we a community at large or are we a set of disparate communities and what's mine's mine? And what's yours is yours and we don't see our city as one entity? Because I think that's the basis of this argument.
If I can through the chair, not to in any way try to answer the question, but just to add if I can.
Why not?
Just draw attention to the, in this report, the responsibilities under the E T S, the emissions trading. And they are specific in this case and I think that people do have regard to, they don't in any way.
But aren't they, they're allowed for in, as part of realising the asset? So I don't think they're an issue. The issue is where the surplus revenue goes.
Councillor Van Der Sis?
I think the $80,000 question really is regarding the emissions trading scheme. At the bottom of six point two, we've got some detail on what's required. If, for instance, the native plantings don't reach a height of five metres within twenty years of planting, are we then in a position where in fact we have to pay this $80,000 back and this money doesn't exist in the first place?
My understanding is that there is some risk around that, but the risk is entirely minimal from our point of view. And Professor Wayong, that seems a very, quite a generous target to have to reach.
Right, so just as someone who tried to reach a similar target myself, planting totterus in my family and opossums got a lot and nothing I could do could stop them. Are we confident that the way that we fire opossums or pine poisoning of the soil, for instance, that will prevent that target being reached?
If I can through the chair, I'm not sure how much confidence this will give. I can say that we do have opossum control methodology in place and we would certainly not be depending on totter to achieve that height over that period. We would look at a more diverse range of species.
And that diverse range of species, would the aim of diverse range to eventually produce millable timber as a forest or would it simply become, rather than a returning forest, would it simply become an ongoing reserve?
Now, if I can through the chair, it's been the intention for years that in meeting the historic requirements of these forestry investments on parks, the outcome for parks, council's parks department is to meet community needs for parks and recreation, not for commercial enterprise. That would be dealt with by people with that acumen.
Right, so this particular block of land, which was essentially a forestry block and gave us a return, is not going to be giving us a return at any time in the future. It's going to just be added to parks and reserves.
That is the case.
Thank you.
Councillor Wilson?
I just want to, councillor Staines, to show further really, and it's, my understanding when Dunedin City, as the Ogden Dunedin City in eighty-nine, owned the city forest, for example, I think, or what, the tree belts? And then they were shared quite evenly throughout the city. The, we didn't own the company since then, so the holdings we had of...
It was the council department.
It was council department, but it was only Dunedin City that owned those trees.
No.
It was amalgamation of some sort of...
Port Chalmers had significant tree crops, as did most of the other areas of the city. It all got amalgamated into city forests.
Okay, and that may have been best example. The other example I'd use is the tree land that we are owned by Waste Water Services and appreciating that, again, those were amalgamated. But any benefit that comes from those usually only goes to the rate payers of those funds that gets, or would go into that Waste Water. We've, and we haven't had a consistent line in the, these things, the way we've dealt with them as one city and that becomes harder and harder each time we deal with these in a different, a different methodology, which makes it very hard knowing if we're setting a precedent in this one as well. The other reason I'm concerned about moving this today is that it is guzzumping a potentially annual plan process where we should be looking at these as items for priority for the people of the Saddle Hill Community Board and others to say, are these first priorities? Because I'm not quite sure about the process that has gone through, albeit that they are in their community plans, whether the Saddle Hill community members want to have a say on that priority order as well. And I would feel more comfortable if the motion was subject to annual plan discussions, that that money be set aside for those projects. And that, so that it gives an opportunity for the community to submit on it.
I'm waiting on the question, councillor Wilson.
We've gone to debate it, but we, oh, I'm sorry. Well, the question then is, normally when we do a playground development or a park development, that goes, would be in the annual plan as part of an annual plan budget and would be able to be submitted on as a priority? Sorry, that's how the process would normally happen, or playground developments. And the other part of the question is, where would these be on your plan, in your priorities for Dunedin City? So would these normally go to annual plan and would, what priority are they on your orders of projects at present?
I think one of them did go to annual plan and got declined, actually. Is that right? One of these two was one of the annual plan discussions, but it got cut off in the prioritisation process?
Yeah, I think it got taken out.
Saddle Hill City somewhere on Walton Park.
As a discretionary spend, so the date, the line annual plan to date, which is, which is what's behind the staff recommendations, that through the annual plan process, these discretionary spends don't get made, that the discretionary spends have been held in order to pay down our debt, which is what's behind the staff recommendation that we've gone and paying the debt. It would be possible to raise these through the annual plan so that you are able to prioritise them. This process effectively goes around the edge of that and allows you to prioritise them outside of annual plan.
And that's what, so that's that side, it's a precedent, but it's also the process that should I have?
No further questions? Jenny, can you put the motion up so we're confident on what's...
Can I have a right of reply?
No, we haven't had a discussion yet.
Okay, thank you.
Can you just confirm councillor Hudson, let us what you move?
So can I ask a question of the mover?
I'm just waiting on the confirmation, then there's more. Are you happy with that, councillor Collins, Mr Secunder? All right, the total for discussion.
I can ask a question of mover and Secunder. How do they feel with number two and number three that be subject to the annual plan process? Just to give other folk a chance to put forward their ideas as well? Or do you want it to go through as it is?
Well, I understand it's been fully debated by the Saddle Hill Community Board, who represent the community that is involved in this. And I don't think it should need any further discussion. If somebody wants to move an amendment, that's up to them to move an amendment.
Councillor Van Der Sis?
I find it quite interesting that in a finance and strategy meeting, and in fact, in every step of it so far today, nobody wants to talk about the debt. When Mr Ross Liddell said in the, in the last item, he made the comment that we shouldn't sell off the Waipori Fund because councillors would just spend it. I think what we have in this particular item is a perfect example of that, where we get an unusual and unexpected little windfall from a higher price than we thought we might get for some timber. And virtually before this timber's hit the ground, there are plans for it to go anywhere other than paying off the $650 million worth of debt that lies behind all of our responsibility here. The claim that the Saddle Hill community have already discussed this and that Saddle Hill Community Board are the people who are concerned, I think is misleading in that the whole city is concerned with what we do with the selling off of anything. I don't believe that this is a Saddle Hill asset to sell. I'm reminded of what the chairman said at the outset, that the Saddle Hill Community Board is not in a position to make recommendations despite their supposed recommendation being spoken of as that by a number of councillors here today. We have a situation here where a rare surplus of $127,000 is essentially, as I understand it, supposed to go to reducing debt. It's a relatively small amount and perhaps that may be the problem, the debt is so large that we simply don't think we can even start to attack the mountain with a mulch like this. But I think that we should. I think that we should be very wary of any kind of spending opportunities. What we need to do is look at, are we going to get value for whatever money we're spending? And the value thus far, as it would appear, seems to be $10,000 to the Saddle Hill Community Board, $10,000 for a beautification project, just which is sort of like a nice idea. I, if we're going to spend $10,000 on beautification or if we're going to give it to the community board, I would like to see a rationale for what value the city gets as a result. I don't see that here, so I'll be voting against the motion.
Further speakers, councillor Staines?
I find myself in a position where predominantly I agree with councillor Van Der Sis. I think the process here is incorrect. We should be seeing ourselves as one city. I accept that... I accept that the community board has two projects that they feel are a priority for their community. And I would certainly encourage them to work those projects up to a point where they can present them for consideration during the annual plan process, which is where these decisions should be made. It gives then an opportunity for their community to have a say, and for that to be balanced up against the overall needs of the city. We are one city. I don't think that it's appropriate to look at money which has come from a resource in one sector of the city and say, because it came from there, it should go back there. So I think the right process is annual plan, and I can't support these resolutions.
Further debate, councillor Stevenson?
First, I wouldn't mind if they could be taken secretly, that would be very good. Because listening to the others, the debate, yes, I can understand that there's a fairness issue there. I'm thinking that I'm probably more favorable towards number three, because ten thousand dollars is less than ten percent of the money that's coming out of the trees. It can really build a sense of community, the kids coming together, deciding on their project. If they feel some sympathy, the school for the beautification project, maybe that's their choice to put some money towards that. But the very process of the children choosing and working with the community to find a project can be really strong in building a sense of community, and I think that that is a really valuable spend of money. So because I'm frugal on one hand, but want the community to be, you know, energized to do something together, I would reach compromise and vote for three, which is only ten thousand dollars of windfall money to be chosen by the school on what they want to do. And maybe that will be the beautification project or part of, so that's my views.
Councillor Horson?
I'm going to vote against this motion, not because I want to, but because I think the actual opportunity for savings hasn't been realized in the one that's been given to us. There are seventy-five thousand dollars' worth of free planting costs in this, of which I'm sure some of that's labour. And that is the opportunity for the community to gain, taking a lesson from the people who planted these thirty years ago. And that's where the community money would be, that they can plant it as a community and do the savings, and then reinvest into their community, I think. I think that gives, so had they come along as a community and said, we'll replant this, we've got the manpower, we'll get the vote rates or whatever, and lines groups and the kids involved, and which is a much better way of them taking ownership of that park as well, and then building in some of those improvements in that way, they would actually have been a win-win and community development. I think that this sets a very dangerous precedent for the other ways that things could happen. And I think that's the opportunity that's been lost in the way that this has been set out today. Wouldn't be adverse, again, for those to come through the proper channels, which is annual plan, and them to argue their case in a proper manner at that stage.
Further debate? You can.
I find we're faced with a couple of conflicting imperatives here. It's a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars' worth of realized asset that we have to make a decision on where it goes. And I completely agree with councillor Staines that we should see ourselves as one city, and the assets of the various councils that may have amalgamated Dunedin City Council in eighty-nine should be seen as that, as city assets. And in this case, an amalgamated council, some years on, has made a policy, and made a decision that any surplus money should be applied to debt repayment, and I fully support that. However, these trees were planted by the community, and in a sense, they don't belong to the council, they belong to the community, and I make that distinction. And I imagine that, and I note that in the report, it says that the original intention, and it's quite clear, that the proceeds would go to reserves or the Fairfield community and various things like that. So presumably was envisaged as being over and above any spending that council would do for amenity in that area. So I see a kind of, on the one hand, a perfectly proper amalgamated city position on utilizing surplus funding for debt repayment, and an historic obligation to a deal that was done with the community. So I find myself in a situation where I see this motion as being compromised, because what it's not doing is saying all of the proceeds need to come back to the community as part of this agreement. It's saying, there's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars net. Of that, we suggest twenty thousand to come back to the community who put this in in the first place. And being unable to make a decision either way completely, I think this is a reasonable compromise, given the historical obligation, and I will be supporting this motion.
Further debate? Councillor Commons?
Okay, everything that you've just said, my thoughts are dark, so I'll follow.
Councillor McTavish?
Yeah, I think the mayor has articulated my thoughts probably better than I could, so I'm grateful to that. I think that the sentence that I underlined in this report was the one that was the records from Silver Peak County Council, which seems quite specific in its intention that the revenue from harvesting be used for the benefit of this reserve or reserves in the Fairfield area. And while I think that the, perhaps with an amalgamated city, you can place less emphasis on the second part of that sentence, which is about reserves in the Fairfield area. I think the returning ten thousand dollars to that park, it seems like the right thing to do, especially given that ultimately this is resource that has come from that finua, from that land. And I think in many ways, there is a strong argument to at least make an effort to return that park to a state in which it can provide real benefit to that community. And if it can be done in conjunction with the school and the community, I think even better. So I think my position is that I am going to struggle to support number two, because I do think that that is something that perhaps needs to be prioritized in relation to other reserves and park investments that need to be made around the city. But I'm comfortable supporting number three.
Thank you. Before I give you a write-up reply, councillor Hudson, my thoughts are quite clearly that I could support number three. I'm in the same position really as councillor McTavish has made known. But I would be more comfortable if we could actually incorporate in your motion the reasoning behind using that, what the mayor has articulated, because I think that's the key point. And if in years to come, somebody picks up these minutes, they will just see a change to the policy and not a really sound reason sitting behind it. So I'm wondering if you would be amenable to incorporate those words?
Very much so, because, can I give my write-up reply? And then we can try and amend the motion appropriately.
You're fine.
I've obviously spoken about this to Colin Wetherall, and he apologizes for not being here today. Colin was around thirty years ago, and has been involved in this community for a long period of time. And his very clear recommendation and recollection is in line with what the staff are telling us, which Dave has articulated, that the revenue from harvesting is to be used for the benefit of this reserve or reserves in the Fairfield area. This was not a council asset, it was a community asset, and it's unique in its situation. So I don't think we're setting any precedent by whatever we decide to do today. A number of people have talked about debt repayment, and I understand that that was some of the focus of the discussions at the Saddle Hill Community Board. And they were very conscious of debt repayment as well. And they looked at the situation and said, but the records indicate that all of the proceeds could be used by the Fairfield community. And responsibly, they said, no, ten thousand and ten thousand, given the city's situation, would be their recommendation. Just for a little bit of background for Jinty and others who may not have been involved at the time, the replanting program is when the road was diverted from going through Fairfield to the alignment that it has at the moment. And there were to be funds provided from that transfer for the beautification of the area, which Lisa has pointed out for economic reasons, hasn't been completed, and will at some stage, if it's not immediately, need to be completed. How you'd like to phrase it, I'm not sure, sir, but I think it should, perhaps it could say, noting... So if I could say something like, noting that the council records indicate that the revenue from harvesting was to be used for the benefit of this reserve or reserves in the Fairfield area.
I think that, councillor. I'm going to suggest that what you asked for was an explanation of why the council policy was being departed from. So I think we need to be quite explicit if that's what you want. So note that the departure from policy of allocating surplus funds to debt repayment is based on an understanding that the plantings were a community rather than a council asset, and whatever else you've got.
Is everyone comfortable with the intent of the motion? Do we need to wait until it goes up?
The word, I think, which compromises, and I'm being convinced by the changes, is the word "under". It should be alongside, because I think otherwise it gives it, I think what you're trying to emphasize is, it is as a community initiative alongside the Silver Peaks County Council. It wasn't the Silver Peaks County Council, that is what distinguishes it from this. So if you take the word "under" out and put alongside?
Yes.
That, I think, differentiates us.
Anyone comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Can you take them all?
Can we have it? Because there's been a change event, I'm happy to have further debate.
You should probably have the two, the two ten thousand dollar allocations, and then noting that that departure was a result, rather than having the departures before the allocation. But other than that, that number two should probably become number four, yes.
So any further debate required?
You can take those separately, please, sir?
Yes, if you want to.
Want to speak? Just indicating that I think, given that new resolution clarifies the position in terms of setting a precedent, I think I could be prepared to support the ten thousand dollars towards the reserve. But the other is not actually what it was intended for, so the reserve payment, that's that.
Councillor McTavish? Can I suggest that in number five, we simply remove the figure that specifies a hundred and seven thousand, since that may be a hundred and seventeen thousand, or it may be whatever, depending on what the other ones are. It's still the remaining surplus. So are we all comfortable? All right, all those in favor?
Don't take all the ones.
Oh, sorry, you get me out. Number one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Number two? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against?
No.
Show of hands. All those in favor? Against? It's always being the chair.
Maybe you might have to drop.
You can't vote against yourself, sit and not die. It is going to council, so I'll give the council a bit of a doubt, so I'll vote for it with my extra vote. So we'll go to the council.
Should we say, vote this way, if you're going to do it on your way home?
Another bobbing swear. Was it? Sorry. I see how my hands are going. All those in favor? Five, four, yeah, it is lost, so it can be read to the rest of council.
We've got a council, sir.
Number four, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? And number five? All those in... I wonder how they get finished. Number three, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against?
No.
Let's carry, and number five, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? All right, and we'll move on to item seven, which I don't see a need for in relation to the position we're at at the moment. So just before closing, as this is my last committee meeting of chairing of council after fifteen years on council, I really want to take the opportunity of, first of all, thanking all my colleagues that have allowed me the privilege of chairing council committees. It certainly has been a privilege. I've been quite fortunate that on the fifteen years, fourteen of those years, I've managed to be able to chair committees. So, and you get that experience and that privilege by being entrusted with that by your peers. And so I really do owe a word of gratitude to all my colleagues that have entrusted that to me. It's something that I've taken quite seriously, in the fact that I see my role as a chairman as to get the will of the committee to the council. It's not about me imposing my views on the committee, it's about gathering the will of the committee and getting a resolution to go to council. So I've made that my policy all the way through. The other thing that I'm really comfortable about, and leaving this council as Chair of Finance, is the fact that I'm really comfortable about the long-term financial strategy that we've got in place now. And it's setting the finances on a pathway that if councils in the future adhere to that long-term financial strategy, then it is going to put Dunedin City in a very strong position in the next ten years. The other area that I need to give a vote of thanks, and that is to staff. From my position, especially as Chair of Finance, you're totally reliant on your staff. And staff have a very awkward position, because they come to the table and they can only produce the facts. They're not there to debate with councillors. And sometimes they get challenged on a number of things and are asked for opinions. When they're not there to give opinions, they're there to give you the facts and figures. And sometimes it does annoy me that staff get ridiculed, or not so much ridiculed, but they get criticized really for producing what is the effect of council. It is actually the facts that you need as a council to make decisions on. So I think, you know, I have great admiration for the staff and the skill of the staff that supported me. Just in closing, I'd like to just give you a quote that I've always held quite dear to my heart when I've been chairing a committee. And that is a quote of William Churchill, Austin Churchill, and it says, "Courage is what it takes to stand up and speak, but courage is also what it takes to..."
speak, but courage is also what it takes to sit down and listen. And I think that's what you need around the table. So I thank everyone for the opportunity. Thank you. The meeting close?